Brought together here for September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P. M. in the evening. This is the zoning Board of Appeals. We currently have three members who are here. We have a fourth member who we're going to appoint to the board for tonight. That would give us four. And then we have two absences for tonight, and I'm not going to go into those two. But Larry is with us here. Do I hear anybody about appointing Lori? Larry, excuse me, for the zoning Board of Appeals for one night in a temporary fashion?
I make a motion that Mr. Hall, the...
Allow the appointed member of the court this evening?
Very good.
And do I have a second?
I accept.
Michael seconded it? All those in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? None. Larry? You're in good shape, and thank you very much. All right, we've got a couple of items on our agenda, but before we jump into that, the members who are here have the meeting minutes from the last meeting. What I would... Thank you. What I would ask is that if you've had a chance to read through them, do we have any comments for changes to them or for approval as they are written?
Can I make a motion to approve as written?
Michael's given us an approval to our motion to approve them as written. Do I have seconded?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Previous meeting minutes are approved as written. All right. So for tonight, we have two matters on the agenda for tonight. We have number one, we've approved the meeting minutes already. The scheduled matters are for one forty-five Orchard Street. The owner's Mr. Stephen Condon. The applicant seeks to attach a front porch to the property house there. Pursued to section, the Village Code, section one seventy-five fifteen C, the applicant proposes to build the porch within the forty-foot front line of the lot. The applicant therefore seeks relief from the current zoning for three feet of a setback. That tells me that they're going to be at thirty-seven feet. Is that correct, Aaron?
Well, it appears to be. There might be a few discrepancies.
So does three feet do what Mr. Condon wants to have done? Or was that back into a corner?
There's a few different maps that we've found that have a few different numbers. So I'll let you guys help decipher and make sure. Because the one I'll shoot, I forgot the other map down there. Joe, do you remember what I told you?
I think it was about thirty-eight feet.
What's that?
I think it was around thirty-eight feet when we measured.
Yeah.
With, going back to the, what we talked about. I know we had scattered conversations about this.
Yeah.
Regarding the setback. Because there's variances all up and down that street.
Right, yeah.
For setbacks.
Yeah. So there's a discrepancy is where we're using the line from where the right-of-way is or from where the end of the road is. That's where the discrepancy is. Jake and I were trying to hammer it up for a while. There was a few different numbers. So I think we're going to be safe with the numbers we're at, but...
So we're asking for three feet?
I believe so. While he starts talking, I'll run down and grab the other map quick because it's obviously only taking a minute. So when he introduces himself and does that, I'll go with him.
Do you see if I have?
No, it's okay. We'll do this part.
Why don't we let Aaron do that? In the meantime, while he's doing that, why don't you stand up and tell the board, number one, who you are, what's the address of the property, which we have here at one forty-five Orchard?
Yeah.
And then you can tell us what it is you would like to do and what you'd like relief from.
Okay, sir. Name, rank, and choose size.
Yeah, that's kind of it. That'll get us there.
Yes, my name is Stephen Condon, Stephen Michael Condon. I live at one forty-five Orchard Street. I've been here about twenty-one, twenty-two years. And the property itself, I know, and I don't want to ramble, but the property, if you recall, if any of you are life members here in the Village of Webster, you remember the White Farm on Orchard Street. And that was right next to me when I moved in. I was very taken back when I found out that the house, the house was absolutely gorgeous. It was supposed to be home. I met the Whites. They gave me some of their plantings off the farm, and I planted them in my backyard. But the house that I have apparently used to be a blood relative of the Whites at one point in its history. Now I'm looking at a hundred-and-eight-year-old piece of property. So is this on? Let me guess.
It's good enough.
Sorry. I know after I'm done, you'll probably have to replace the batteries and this thing. But anyway, it wasn't on the market very long. But with me, I was in the building trades for quite some time. And I just did some things already, you know, with the property, with the shed, just basics. I just completed a fence. And if you look at a map, you'll see the fence that partially surrounds. It's about five-eighths of an acre, the property is. And I've done quite a bit already. But this is the last and final thing outside that I'm going to do other than paint. I've got a serious painting problem that I got to take care of in a dress. But the property that I've got, I've got a little deck off the back. I've got a ten-by-fifteen shed. I built a new oversized, kind of oversized car and a half garage. I tore down the dirt floor garage that was attached. And that was when Will was here, and everything was all taken care of through paperwork and permits and so forth. So I got another garage out. And my last thing, like I said, is an open front porch deck type of structure. And what was originally there were just a set of steps. And everyone's got their own eye when they see something. But originally going back, when I saw this place when it was on the market, the place I was told by the realtor scared a lot of people because of the amount of work involved. That didn't faze me. So anyway, I took the house, I bought it. I still have some aesthetic work to be done inside. I put a wood stove in. But outside, just the steps were there. And it reminded me of like a modular home. And I didn't like that. I wasn't comfortable with that at all. So with the things that I've been doing around the house, I wanted to make an addition on that would be, you know, add to the house. And to my liking, of course. So I have a little porch out the back where I have sliding doors. And out the front, it would be nice to sit there because it's a solid southern tier exposure. It catches the full rays of the sun. But anyway, I would like to put a nice little porch deck up for the reason of, not only for relaxation, other than I still have my military hammock. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. But the front porch, you know, I'd like to sit out there one time or a little while and at least give everybody the parade wave when they're driving by, you know? So... But anyway, I really want a porch out there for, it would add value to the place as well. And for my usage, personal usage. And I mean, really, that's about it. And when I talked about, when it was brought up about a setback, now, I learned this way back when Will was here because he looked into it also. And I wrote it down, and pardon me, Aaron. I can't find that paper to save my life to... Oh, there you go.
I think I found the one that Will had. This was where some of the question comes to...
Yeah. But he also told me too, just a verbal statement saying that he's aware that there are variances throughout that whole street, both sides, north and south, on either side of the street about the average, the average setback on Orchard Street Village is thirty-four feet.
Is that where it's at?
And, yeah. So the thing of it is, it just, when I measured from the, when we measured, and I measured from the front foundation of the house straight out to the street, to the north edge of the street gutter, it was forty-five feet, one inch. And my porch is going to be nine foot, six inches long by only eight feet out. It's not big. It's only seventy-six square feet. So that's not a big area. But it's something to sit down on, put a couple of chairs on for company and relax. But I'm going to be using all pressure-treated lumber, flipping the coin mentally whether to stain it or paint it. No, I don't want to paint it, but maybe natural fetish over. That's what I like.
Quick question for you, and this will help me, Aaron. Setback at the road, one spot for the entire property? Or is it the same spot? In other words, what I'm getting at is, does it change if you go down the road?
Well, depends. Each house is different locations, semi-further, closer, you know, stuff like that. So the average, so I did find some of Will's notes. The average, apparently for that area is thirty-four feet. So when we, when we measured, when I took the measurement, I went also from the gutter, edge of the gutter, to the front of the house. After discussion with Jake, it's, he thinks it's supposed to be from the other side of the edge of the sidewalk to the front of the house.
Is there a built-in gutter there?
Yep. That's what I said. Yeah, like, yeah, there is.
All right.
So if we use the right-of-way, the edge of the right-of-way, which brings it to the edge of the sidewalk, it's only thirty-four and a half feet, which means you would need a thirteen-point-five-foot setback.
Well, the bizarre thing again with the Village of Webster zoning code, is read the definition of a front yard in the code, one seventy-five days four. It says it's an open and occupied space between the building line or front main wall of a building and the front property line. Now, if you look at his map, and we don't have his deed, but my guess is, according to this map, his property line actually goes to the center line of the road. You know, and there's nothing, there's nothing in the definition that defines front yard only to the right-of-way. Now, that's different in the town of Webster. They do it more correctly, as I bet the town of Pennsyls, where they define front setback is just going to the right-of-way line. But the village makes no mention of the right-of-way line. So why, Will, and the building department, everybody's using right-of-way line? Who knows? And then it gets even more confusing because I don't understand what this means. In all cases where the front property line cannot be established, well, you can always establish the front property line. You look at the deed. You know, so that sentence to me is, doesn't mean anything. So, you know, technically, according to the code, he, you know, he's got another twenty, you measure it from his property line, which is the center of the road, which is another twenty-four-point-seven-five feet, which is half the distance of Orchard Street. It says it's a forty-nine-point-five-foot right-of-way. He doesn't even need a setback. Because now you add that to his, whether it's thirty-five feet, thirty-seven feet, whether, whatever it is.
So let me ask this then. What are we going to do every place in the village? Fix this code with that kind of code?
Fix this code. Well, you've got to change the code. That definition, it should measure, and first of all, there's no definitions of a setback. You know, if you look at the S's, it's not there. So you probably should get rid of, well, well, I don't know if you need front yard.
But in general, I think all of us would have said, we all agree that forty feet existed, and it's what we were all looking for.
Because it's a practical matter, and I don't even know if the right-of-way goes to the edge of the gutter or not. Sometimes the right-of-way goes beyond where the pavement is.
Is that the edge of the road?
You know, so the right-of-way go, a lot of times the right-of-way goes farther than that because they put utilities and all sorts of stuff undergrounded. So where he's, on the map where it says right-of-way, I assume that's where it is. I don't know if that's the edge of the curtain, the gutter.
No, it's the edge of the, the north side of the sidewalk.
Let me just ask this, because by the way, what he's doing, he doesn't have much of a problem with me. I mean, I see it, I drove by it, I went down there. By the way, he's got two very nice signs. Thank you very much. So not a lot, not a lot of issues with what he's doing. But what I do, what's, what's beginning to get to me in my mind is, if I'm in the village, it's generally accepted to be forty feet. Most people don't know, is that at the edge of the gutter? Is it the forefront of the gutter? Is it the center of the road?
That's where the whole question comes into play.
And where I'm going is, okay, so not much of a problem here. But going forward...
We need to fix this.
We need a consistent application of whatever we're going to try and do.
Right.
And that means that I go and I talk to Jill, and I talk to the others.
Remember months ago when I said there's several codes that need to be fixed?
Yes, I do remember that.
Add this to the list.
This was...
I would be calling the county surveyor to say, because I don't think they can even do the surveys anymore where it goes to the center line.
Yeah.
It has to be to the right of the road.
Because this was...
Obviously, you cannot build anything in the road.
Well, right, then that means he would be responsible for plowing the road. No, no, he takes title subject. Yeah, they don't take title subjects to that anymore. Well, no, it doesn't matter. At some point, I'm sure if I look in his, in his abstracted title, the right-of-way to Orchard Street, the villager took, you know, the village dedicated there. So he takes title subject to the municipal right-of-way. That doesn't mean he's responsible for plowing the villages. They took the, it was, they took... So that means the right-of-way line is where the setback should be from. Well, that's not, again, the problem is the definition. Right. The definition in the code. Because also, so I, but I guarantee if you contact the county surveyor, they'd be telling you that this is not feasible.
Let me go this way. If we do call the county, do they have a problem with any of the setbacks or anything that's going to go on? If a porch is, if a porch is going to knock that out, they have no problem with that. So the second part of the question goes into the third part. We'll get to that. Second part of the question is, what do we do to allow him to build the decent front porch that he wants to put out there? And then still have it? The third part is, how's it still in compliance with anything that we think we're going to do or we're going to recommend? We're not going to do it. We're just going to, you know, make a comment to the town board or to the village board.
So if we want to go worst-case scenario, do the thirteen-point-five-foot setback. That's worst-case scenario.
And that puts him at?
Still the same exact location and same everything.
The house doesn't change.
None of that needs, it's just a matter of where it's measured from.
Right.
If you measure from gutter, he needs a three-foot setback. If you measure from the right-of-way, he needs a thirteen-point-five-foot setback.
So the point would be, crank the variance for that, but then still...
Then we still fix this code.
We still have to fix this code for everything that exists in the village.
Right. Because we didn't, to be honest with you, I have more porch setbacks coming up. I've already, we've already got one next, next one, I think it is. So we've got more that's coming up. I mean, granted, this other one is a lot closer. A lot's closer. So, but for worst-case scenario, let's say thirteen-point-five feet, where does that take it by? It takes it to the north, north edge of the sidewalk, which is, he's still on, most sides of the sidewalk, it's less maintained.
It takes it to the north edge, north edge towards the lake of the sidewalk that exists on Orchard Street.
Which is the street right-of-way.
Which is the street right-of-way.
And that makes, number one, it's easier to be happy with the individual, allows him to build what he's trying to show.
This is where a surveyor came up with this line. So I'm trusting the surveyor is properly writing this information.
Doesn't show where the edge of the gutter is.
I don't care about where the edge of the gutter is.
I care about the line.
Aaron was just talking about measuring from the gutters.
Right, because that's where I, I...
But you shouldn't, I, you shouldn't...
Tell me, tell me your forty feet, is it the edge of the gutter or is it the center of the road?
According to the code now, it's to the property line, the front property line, which is neither, which is neither of the two that you just said.
Right, right.
It depends on your deed. A lot of older deeds go to the center line of the road. Usually in the subdivisions, like in the shant, it'll probably just...
That's the track I was talking about.
Well, in shant, you've got to look at the subdivision map because most, your deed discrepancy, just say your lot forty-five of the shant subdivision section, blah, blah, blah. According to a subdivision map, blah, blah, blah. But this isn't part of a subdivision because it's an older house. And the older homes in the village aren't part of subdivisions either. So depending on, depending on where you are in the village, you know, the right-of-way line could include where the sidewalk is or it may not include where the sidewalk is. So, so people, if you've got a sidewalk in front of your house, the right-of-way line is a lot shorter than if you don't have a sidewalk in front of your house.
Right.
Which makes a difference because you should measure from the right-of-way line, not from the gutter, not from, you know?
So how far will he be from the sidewalk? Tell me that in my mind.
To the edge of his house, it'll be thirty-five, thirty-four-point-five feet. So then come back out, he's coming out eight foot.
So thirty-four-point-five feet right now. So that six feet would give us forty.
So with the right-of-way, go measuring from the right-of-way, like I said, for that forty foot, it'll lead to thirteen-point-five-foot right-of-way, or setback.
Which would take it down to twenty-seven.
Right.
Or is it twenty-seven or forty-two?
Twenty, twenty-six-point-five.
Twenty's twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven feet from the outside edge of the new, owes that to the sidewalk. The outside, the northern edge of the sidewalk?
Well, just...
Yes, man. Where's this? It's a distance. I've got twenty-six, if you're going to do twenty-six feet.
The distance from the front of the house to the right-of-way line is thirty-four-point-five feet.
So then coming out from the edge of the deck would be twenty-six-point-five. So you just leave a thirteen-point-five.
Right. For whatever reason, this map, this other map that got circulated doesn't mean the distance from the house to the...
Yeah. To the right-of-way. That's my question.
Okay, that's a reasonable question to just ask.
Yeah.
What's the difference between thirty-seven and, what was the other one?
Well, I'm looking at this, yeah, you circle thirty-four-point-five from right-of-way to the house.
Right.
But then on this drawing, you have thirty-seven-point-one from right-of-way to the front of the new deck. How did, how did that happen?
The new one, the new one was drawn in by him.
Yeah, I was going to say, with all due respect to the applicant, a surveyor didn't do that. He did. And he actually, and he actually said it was thirty-seven feet, one inch. Well, one inch isn't a point one. That's different. So you've got to go, you've got to go, you've got to go with the map that the, that the surveyor actually measured to the right-of-way line, which is thirty-four-point-five feet. So I don't know where...
Just tell me right now, how long is your front porch going to be?
How long?
How, well, how, how, how far from the front door?
Going from the front door out straight? Eight feet.
Eight feet out. So it's going to be, it's going to be an eight-foot piece of wood. Maybe you don't have to cut it.
And then from east to west is nine foot six.
Well, the east and west, that one didn't bother me. With north and south, that gives us the setback.
Technically, after the approval here, you could put the deck across the whole front of your house. You will be...
You won't be exceeding that variance.
Across the whole front of your house if you wanted to. We don't care about that, just the front line.
Yeah, so your deck is going to be eight feet long, eight feet from the edge of the house.
Eight foot out from the house and then nine foot and a half.
And the house is how far from the road right now? Or from the, from the center of the right-of-way?
Thirty-seven-point-five, right?
Thirty-seven, thirty-four.
Thirty-four-point-five plus eight is going to be twenty-six-point-five.
So it's twenty-six, right? Twenty-six-point-five, which leads to thirteen-point-five, what we need.
And there's nobody else around there who has anything that's one way or the other, at least not from what I saw.
Yeah.
Does that help you?
I think so.
Okay.
We're on the gas, or is it not, Senator?
Legally speaking, I don't even think he needs any kind of area because it's measured from his front property line, which is the center line of the road.
So, and I understand that. But right now, he's asking us for eight feet out from the edge of the house, and do we want to say that that's okay?
Regardless of...
And then we would, then we would limit that.
And go ahead. All right, go ahead.
Gentlemen, I remember, I repeat, for one second.
I like that thing in question.
Go ahead, please do.
I read blueprints all day long. So I'm looking at the plan view.
That's, yeah, that's not accurate. I mean, it's been downsized.
Okay, no, I, I don't care about scale or any of that.
I got to blame the coffee store that did it, so...
So then I look at this, and then I look at this, the side view. So I'm assuming the side view based upon what you're showing me is roughly half the deck is going to be railing.
I don't know if this will help or not.
No, we don't need that.
No, I don't need that. I don't need that. I'm just looking at these two drawings that you provided. So you showed me this, and you said, okay, I've got a deck and I've got some steps. And since there's no dimensions, there's no scale on here, I'm saying, all right, let me, I'm going to assume that every block here is, based upon the numbers you provided in Britain, that this is going to be basically an eight-foot deck. And then I'm like, okay, if that's an eight-foot deck, then you've got three foot of stairs. Okay, and then this drawing shows me roughly four and a half, five feet of railing. Okay, just as it is. Is there a railing on the front edge of this deck?
There's going to be railings.
Okay, and that's not shown on this drawing?
And it's only, it's going to be on the average. The variation of the ground to the bottom side of the deck is only about twenty-eight inches high.
Yes, you indicate, well, we'll get to that too because you say right here, twenty to twenty-one feet approx from ground to framework. Add the framework, add the decking, you are somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-eight and a half to twenty-nine and a half. You are this far below needing a railing all the way around the deck. You know, like, that's...
That's interesting because he technically doesn't even need a rail. He's just doing it because he wants one.
No, I get it. General building code say thirty inches above grade, you need a rail.
Right, he's, yeah, this could be well below that.
Well, not well, because he's saying twenty to twenty-one from ground to bottom of framing. Now add the framing, add the decking. You're adding heights. You are just flirting with thirty inches. Now add the framing, add the decking, you're adding heights. You are just flirting with thirty inches.
Yeah, with all due respect, railing has nothing to do with this board, that's building stuff, you guys, we're only worried about the front setback, that has nothing to do with railing.
I know, but I'm, I'm just, I'm a details guy. If you're gonna, if you're gonna put a railing all the way around, I wanna show me that, okay, I get it. The railing goes to the stairs, the stairs go here, the railing keeps going, so I would have expected you to show me a post on this edge.
That was just the wrong diagram, just to show that there is intent to have a railing around.
Like I said.
And the opening for the steps, the risers, maybe thirty-six inches wide.
Well, like I said, I'm a details guy, I just don't clarify in my mind what this thing looks like.
My comments have been very thorough myself, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, one of our purviews here is also the aesthetics involved, so... And I will say first and foremost, I am a huge proponent of front porch.
Yeah.
Front, because that, as you say, hi neighbor, hi neighbor, everybody welcome by, it is a wonderful thing, I've got a big front porch in my house.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they are an absolute, uh, uh, what's, not, not, the opposite detriment.
Good things.
A good thing for any house in the neighborhood itself. And I know we have set precedent whereby we have, you know, variance, a lot of houses that wanna put front porches on, because they are a good thing.
If you have taken a ride by the place, just to eyeball it, you notice I've got a fence, it's not a, it's not a snow fence. The idea behind that fence I got, which was for blows, just an inexpensive fence, was to keep, if you notice, I have some trees missing on the west side of my front part of my property. Reason is, gentlemen, is because I've had so many dogs, people walking the dog, you say neighbors, yes, and it also says in scripture, "Love thy neighbor as thyself." Sometimes it's hard, because I notice when they're walking their dogs, they're not carrying their plastic bags. So, it's just a, because I meant to tell Jake this.
We gotta get the village board to work on that.
But I remember, just to touch on this quick, what you fellows were talking about before, was that amount of footage and so forth and so on. I remember either Will or Jake was very much aware and had knowledge of certain footage throughout parts of the street anyway. But I just wanted to throw that in, because I remember having conversations with both Will and Jake about that. But again, that fence, I put it up for the reason being that the dogs killed tree after tree after tree, and you know, dogs go back, keep going back to the same spot again. So, I have to replace five trees, those are the herbivores. You know, because I like, I only get fifteen feet bush out to four feet wide, so... But that's, that was the idea behind having that. I know it's not, it's not exactly your Better Homes and Garden type fence, but it's just something where I just wanted to put something up to keep the dogs away, because some neighbors are not very kind about, are very conscientious about what their dogs do, because they notice they just keep on walking. And I'm the one that's gotta go out with the plastic bag, so...
Perfect, understand it. All right, I got a quick question here from Mr. Lauer.
Yes, sir.
If we were gonna go ahead and approve this at some reasonable place, where do we think the village would go with setting a boundary? Wow. Wouldn't we, and all I'm trying to do, I'm trying to beat it before it come back to us.
Well, the, the code needs to be changed, because I think that that setback is different in a lot of areas within the code.
Yep.
So that has to be standardized. And that's, we're working on changes to the code.
Okay.
I think we'll need to call the county, like was recommended, to see what they're using now as reference, and then we'll have to use that reference going forward and get a change. Obviously, this definition is not even close enough to our, so once we get that part deciphered, we'll get it turned over.
What I'm, what I'm trying to do is say that if we, if we go at this thing and do an approval, um, regardless of what our legal...
Right.
...comment, uh, suggestion.
Yeah, that's why I think if we do...
Let's make sure it's right, and make, make sure that it takes into account almost anything that could be done.
Right.
Or allow to say it that way.
Well, it doesn't matter, if you're worried about that the village is gonna change the front setback to something more or less than forty feet.
We would say automatically allow those that are there.
Well, the grandfather in any house, you don't have to say anything, they're automatically, the zoning, changes in zoning codes aren't retroactive.
Fair enough.
They're, they're only prospective going forward.
Understood, unless it'll make sense.
All right.
Like spoken of, but, yeah.
Before we go there?
We have some.
Right. Just, just another comment, is there any secret issues associated?
County here.
Nope.
It's a, well, a setback variance is a type two action under secret, which by definition is no significant...
That's where I wanted to be, thank you.
So, he really technically didn't even have to submit a short environmental assessment.
Understood. So eight feet would give us, giving us down to, call it twenty-six feet or whatever you wanna call it. If that's the right number...
That's you got.
Because that would go to thirty-four, give you, give you eight feet for the planks to build the deck. That's the way I would go with it. If anyone has any other questions, or anyone from the audience have any comments, also mine?
Richard Walder, Twenty Elm Street. The only comment I have on, on your determining the right-of-way, I heard that mentioned the edge of the sidewalk. This is not true. On Elm Street, the, the right-of-way extends one foot beyond the sidewalk. It's, it's a rough measure, but it's not true, and in the older parts of town, they always measured from the center of the street. That's why they called, called it a right-of-way, because it's across your property, but the, technically, the village has it, because it's their right-of-way across your property.
Right.
So, it is a very confusing matter. I know when I had mine surveyed, the question came up, are where are we measuring from? When I put up my garage, and my, according to the surveys, my neighbor's house sets ten feet closer to the road than mine does. According to their survey and my survey, but obviously, they're both in the same line.
It should be from the right-of-way, because that's been surveyed, you know, otherwise, you're relying on applicants going out with a tape measure or something.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
And here I'm doing it, it's not accurate.
I agree, it should be from the right-of-way line, but I, I'm just saying that the right-of-way line does not necessarily follow the sidewalk.
But that's why you don't measure it to the sidewalk, measure it to the right-of-way line.
But the center, the center line of the street isn't necessarily in the center of the right-of-way either. So that's why you can't measure from the center, the center line of the road.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, having said that, we've addressed the secret issue.
Oh.
You probably should take a motion.
We do, and then we, we also talked about where this thing should go, so we've got those things around the table.
I just wanted to add that I totally agree, a porch would look nice and be a nice addition.
Thank you.
Need a motion, I believe, to accept that it's type two?
Correct.
Before you go through?
I'll make that motion, that it's a type two under secret.
We have a motion, we have a type-two secret, all right? Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. So we're all done with that. Now, tell me now, we're going to, and I apologize, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say I don't care how this is done, but I, you know, he's gonna build this eight feet from the edge of the house, so whatever that comes down to, that's what we want to, that's what we want to allow.
I believe we make a motion for a thirteen, and allow thirteen, fourteen-five foot, about thirteen. That gives him the leeway to build the deck.
I agree, I made it two drawings.
Yeah, we're good, we're good with that, okay, we're good with that.
And if we said thirteen, it wouldn't, it wouldn't extend your front porch any more than the eight feet that's out there? I believe with that, all right, so we have a motion on the table?
I, well, I make a motion to, uh...
I mean, that's where the framework is, it's not, right there.
Understood.
Yes, in fact, it may be just a hair under eight feet.
They're trying to do a motion, you gotta let them talk.
Enough.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I got you. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we allow through a thirteen-point-five-foot variant for the construction of an eight-foot, uh, deck.
What porch?
From, or eight-foot porch, measured from the front of the house to eight feet out beyond the house, to be built in that thirteen-point-five-foot variant.
That tells it in my mind, that tells us what we're doing. An eight-foot wide front porch.
Oh, eight foot deep, eight foot ninety, it's ninety-six.
North and south, yeah, depth, depth.
I didn't hear you say deeper wide or anything, you said eight foot.
Okay.
That's why I said, that's why I understood.
Eight foot deep, nine points, six foot wide. That's it, that's what we want.
I second.
We have a motion on the table, and we have it seconded to allow for construction of this particular front porch, gonna be eight feet north and south. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. Apologize it took so long, but thank you for, for spending the time with us, and good luck with your porch.
No, I appreciate it, I, I was listening to everyone, what they had to say about it, as far as getting to some kind of a definition, as far as footage and...
And then nobody has to change again, when they do go through and check the regulations.
But I was, I was prepared to get into, you know, any of the other technicalities about the erection of the deck and going down how far. I do wanna ask this though, since you're here.
Can we, can we talk offline though, because we still have another applicant that has to go on, um, oh yeah, we can talk offline, we'll get to it.
Aaron will help you with whatever you've got going, and I'll help you with interviewing.
What I wanted to ask though is that, I've got something...
I'll, I'll touch base with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you all for that, and, and for helping get us through that one. Now, we also have a second item on the agenda here, we have Catherine Farina, if I pronounced that correct?
Incompetent.
Tell us, number one, who you are, what's the address, and what it is we're trying to do, and why we need, uh, why we need relief from the current codes as they sit.
Okay, I brought my attorney's key today, that's okay.
Got it.
Uh, my name is Catherine Farina, I live at seventy-nine Donning Avenue, and we would like to install an above-ground pool in our side yard. Um, I believe the side setback, um, where I am is six feet, and, um, I would need a variance to reduce that to two and a half feet to allow for the pool installation, so that's what I'm here for.
Okay, so rather than six feet, it's gonna be about three and a half feet farther or closer to the... To the property line?
Yes.
All right. Above ground pool?
Yes.
How high?
Um, fifty-four inches.
Fifty-four inches, so does it then have a railing or one of those one-foot kind of things around the edges on it?
Um, it has a sill on the top, it doesn't have a railing around it, I would plan on putting a deck, um, attached to it, um, that has a railing around it. And my yard is fenced in, actually, that portion of the yard is fenced in.
How would, would the, would the two and a half feet allow for the deck?
Um, I would not put the deck on that side of it, the deck would only be on one side.
Be on the north side, going towards the house.
It's gonna be one square deck on one side of the pool, right?
Square-ish.
Square-ish, got it.
Yeah, it actually should be a rendering in the packet, um, that I submitted. It's only a plan view, I did not do elevations, um, but it can get, kinda give you a sense of how the layout would be. The survey map is from when I first moved in the house in two thousand and four, so it doesn't show my existing deck, which was put in, oh, I don't know, maybe fifteen years ago. Um, so my plan would be to put a deck, um, attach a deck to the pool that connects with the existing deck, if that makes sense.
Okay. Go ahead, ask questions, it will.
So, this problem is, your problem is the fact that you have an existing path.
Yes.
What is that path?
It's a paper path.
Paper path.
Also put in anthracite, so that doesn't show up on the survey either.
Right, but it shows up on this path.
It does, yes.
Okay, so the reason you wanna put the pool is because you don't wanna disturb the path. But you could technically, you wouldn't need a variance if you pushed the pool over to the six-foot setback, you'd have to rework the path a little bit, maybe.
Probably a lot, yeah.
What, what's between the existing paths in the house right now?
Gardens.
Gardens, yeah, flowers, ivy, which I'm trying desperately to get rid of, the ivy, not the flowers.
No, I understand.
Yeah, with it already being fenced in, essentially, you wouldn't even know that there's a pool there, because behind the fence already.
That's what I was just gonna say, the, the fence is also kinda shown on the rendering, and that was also put in anthracite. Uh, it's just inside the property line, um, and I believe it is fifteen, six inches high? But it would, um, as Mr. Thompson said, it would, it's higher than the pool would be, basically. So if you were walking down the sidewalk, you wouldn't be able to see the pool. You'd be able to see the deck and the deck railing probably, but not the pool. Maybe I should've done an elevation drawing.
No, you're, you're fine. Elevation, to be honest with you, doesn't matter, it's the, the society, it doesn't matter.
Oh, I live right across the street from Kathy, and, uh, it, it shouldn't be any problem at all, but we wouldn't be able to see the pool from our front porch.
Yeah.
And all the neighbors are okay with that.
I sent out twenty-three letters, um, to the surrounding neighbors, and, um, the ones that I did speak to gave positive feedback, I'm, I'm not sure if you all received any.
I actually did receive some phone calls, and they were all on paper as well.
Great. Good neighbors.
Yes. One across the street, I was...
Postive or common, insane, we can come into a glen?
Yeah, there might've been a little fire going on.
Again, this is a, uh, type-two, I believe, which doesn't... So if I do this in my mind properly, it's three and a half foot variance? She said six, going two and a half closer. That tells me it's three and a half.
Yes, you need three and a half foot side setback really.
Okay, yeah, we'll do six, three and a half foot, all right, go ahead, keep going.
The park, Donning, you got the white corner house, you're the house behind it.
Black house now.
On that?
It's a black house now.
Yeah.
Oh, the other corner is the white house, I live next to the black house.
Oh, the black house on the corner, so you're done going to Main Street.
Right, between the park and Elm.
Oh, that's why I saw the sign, oh, now I know where you are, I thought you were the other...
I thought you went the other direction. I got you now. You're behind the fence.
Yeah.
So I have a question. If, if we, um, give this variance for a pool, it's, you know, those pools last and were fifteen, twenty years, and then they riled it up and turned them in for, uh, for, uh, get their men in for scrap and go up the ladder. So, is this variance, she fills in, the owner fills in the lot, grasses it, does this, the next person come in, do they have to continue to get a variance if they wanted to do a similar thing?
Or more appropriately, does the variance go away when the pool is taken down?
Yeah, it says, uh...
Variance, variances typically run with the land, so, so that if somebody wanted to replace the pool in the exact same spot?
They could.
They'd do the, whatever you want. One, and again, this is the village code for you, but the definition of a side yard, an open, unobstructed space on the same lot with a building, between the building and the sideline of the lot, and extending through from the front to the rear yard, which space shall be non-occupied? No pools in side yards, except for driveways, parking spaces, fences, and landscaping. So, if you're gonna allow this pool in the side yard, you gotta give a variance for that too. Because otherwise, it's both this particular property.
Every property.
You can't put a pool in a side yard. According to the definition of the code. Right. But a variance would allow, would be associated with this particular property, not all properties that you're renting.
Correct.
Okay.
So you're not granting, you're not changing the code.
Yeah, just doing.
That's what I wanted to make clear.
For this particular.
So we need two variants.
So you need two variants. Ooh. I missed that one. Again, you gotta read these definitions.
So we need, and, 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 and again, and I made a note here.
Yeah.
Technically speaking, all the yards are measured from a building, and is a pool a building? Now, a pool says it's a structure, but nowhere does it says what a structure. So it should be from a structure and not from the building. So, but that's just another, you know, quirk in the code.
So as we're putting these things in, how do you feel about that side yard issue?
Um, wow. My backyard is filled with a play gym and a vegetable garden, so, um, that would probably scrap our pool idea.
Right.
So...
The assumption is it's the only place.
She could fit, she could fit a pool.
Right.
So technically, so Chris.
Mine was in the backyard.
No, I mean, I'm like a rock. Or in the middle of the rock. Wait a minute. How could it be the side yard against, it wasn't the actual house, it was behind the house.
What was that?
Right, behind the side yard. Right.
Well, I think that kinda brings up an interesting point, especially in the village. I think a lot of the lots are very different.
Yeah.
Some of my neighbors don't have any side yard. Um, I'm lucky enough, I guess, to have somewhat of a side yard, um, so, like I said, we've already made use of our backyard with other things to entertain this one. So, um, I mean, I guess I think that should be something that comes into consideration too, if you're, I, I wasn't aware of that, honestly, but, uh...
Obviously neither was I.
Yeah. Um, but I would ask you to consider that, yes, that lots in the village are very different, and, uh, some have a, I don't wanna call it a sizable side yard, because it's certainly not sizable, but it would be big enough to fit a pool.
Your side yard is bigger than your backyard?
Yeah, essentially, yes.
Yeah. Well, in a standard, the house isn't centered upon the lot.
Right. In, in general, they are centered on the lot, but this one isn't.
Yeah.
So to that extent, you could, again, if you go to the factors for area variances, you could argue it's not self-created, because she didn't build the house.
Right.
Why wouldn't you put the pool where the con, where the concrete block patio is?
That's not there anymore. That was removed when I first moved in.
Okay.
But that's where our garden is, and the playset is back there, um, so that's why there's, there's a tree in the back that would cause leaves to come in a little bit, um, or, that's why I wasn't really considering the back. I don't wanna have to do away with all those other.
Is the side yard fenced in?
Yes, the entire side and backyard is fenced in.
Have you considered...
We always talk about why, Carol.
Have you considered an oval pool to be narrow and long?
We did consider an oval pool, um, but it's twice the price, so. I would rather put the, that money into building a really nice deck, um, with some composite decking than, um, than to have the oval pool. Um, I mean, it's, it's an option, but like I said, it's twice the price.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I, I put in a twenty-four foot round pool, but it lasted about twenty-four, twenty-five years for all the kids. They all grew up, moved out of the house, the pool came down.
Yeah.
Yours too, Carol?
I came down, oh, we put it in your own there.
As soon as Maddie left, huh? This has been broadcast to neighbors?
Yeah.
Well, but they have issued twenty or twenty-five letters, sent out to neighbors. All right, because I know you said the pool is hidden by the fence, but you're gonna build the deck up high at the level of the pool, so your neighbors are gonna see all the activity on the deck.
They would, yes.
Okay. But I know who your neighbors are. Carol.
So the first thing you need is a motion for type two stuff, and I understood.
Yeah, allow them to look.
But then we need two things in the side yard, two things, or two, two variances for the pool.
One, you construct the pool in a side yard, and then the construction of the pool, side setback.
Three and a half.
And I assume that the variance would apply to a deck too?
Yeah, it, it basically creates a line.
Okay.
Imagine, right there.
Other questions or thoughts by members on the board? You're right.
Oh, excuse me, hold on. What about variances for the construction of the deck?
You're not gonna need it if you're reading the variance for the...
For the pool!
The pool, that creates a line. Right?
Well, I think technically you're right. It doesn't mean you can build anything you want with three and a half feet of the side yard. She said that that's not going over there though.
Why?
To the side yard, but still, the deck is not a three and a half, the deck is a little, it, it, it's a little less of a setback, because the deck looks like it doesn't go to the, it's close to the side yard as the edge of the pool.
But the deck is still within the set.
But the deck is still within the setback, and you would need a variance for that.
Right.
Because it would be specific to the deck.
Now, a pool is a six foot setback, or what about a structure by the deck, is it ten foot?
They're all, no. Everything's six foot. They're all six foot. Everything is six foot on the side yard.
You wanna build the deck in the side yard?
Uh, well, that's another thing, because it says supposed to be, uh, unoccupied.
Right.
So you need a variance to allow the deck and the pool in the side yard. Because you're only supposed to have landscaping, I fear, whatever the other stuff.
Could that be rolling to one variable in the back here?
I did get a permit for the first deck, which is in the side yard, years ago.
Right. So that would be the third? No, we're not, we're not going back on previous, like, we don't, thank you.
Maybe she brought that up.
No, thank you. I really appreciate that.
But it doesn't show up on the...
I do have a picture in my backyard too, if I can...
No, we've, uh...
But she didn't need, oh, yes, the deck shouldn't have been on the side yard. Technically. But it was done with a permit already.
It existed there.
Yeah. Yeah, there's nothing into it right now.
Right.
And again, and again, the, I mean, village board should look at the definition of a side yard, and we want to keep it unoccupied, as it says. I think most places, side yards are unoccupied. Or at least define a side yard. Does the side yard stop at the front of the house? Does it stop in the back of the house? Can you extend the side yard as...
With the front line of the house.
Yeah.
And I think that's, that is the split.
All right. Questions on the thoughts, or questions for anybody on the board? All right, and before we go on and move on a little farther, any comments or thoughts from any folks in the audience?
No, I think you have a dilemma with the code.
Thank you. All right. So what I see then is three issues to deal with. We got the secret issue, and then we have two issues associate, or two variances associated with allowing a pool. One of them is to allow it three and a half, allow it to extend three and a half feet into the side yard setback or closer to the boundary. And what's the second one?
Actual construction pool.
Thank you.
In a, in a side yard.
In the side yard. You can, which, you should probably include construction of the pool and the deck in the side yard as one, as one variance.
I would agree with that.
So as one variance, rather than do two separate ones that are kind of interconnected, she's not gonna go one without the other.
Set fair?
And then do two separate setback, side setback variances, one for the deck and one for the pool. The pool is, is, is three and a half, I don't know what belongs to the deck, it's...
The, the pool would be slightly wider than the deck. The deck wouldn't be standing past the pool.
Right, it was just, as I understood you, was just gonna be the pool itself closer than the six foot.
Right, but the deck is...
The deck wasn't gonna come around to that side, no, but...
Deck isn't gonna wrap around, but...
No, but it's still the projection, it's still within the six foot side.
Right.
Right, but it's not, I think my point is, it's not any closer to the fence than the pool would be. It would be a little further away from the fence than the pool would be. And the deck dimensions are not very specific.
I would have just come with two and a half, and you'd dress it as a thing. I would've set everything at two and a half feet. So in other words, you give it a three and a half foot variance for not a pool, but for the deck that might be associated with it.
It's just got two, ten inches.
Well, I said, it's, yep, I...
It's to the property line, it's to the... Yep. Okay. All right, before I get us moved on, is there another issue?
Well, no, I was just gonna ask the question, is there a possibility of, uh, moving the deck so it would be within that six foot, um, side setback? Is there...
That would eliminate the barely moving deck.
Just making it a little smaller.
Thanks, thank you.
Right, and shorten it up by that couple of feet.
You'd lose three feet off the deck, so you'd be...
Well, three and a half feet.
Twenty-eight, less, right, I have, sixty and a half. Oh, she's scorching her leg.
I mean, if I have to, I would, I'd...
Well, I'm just answering the question.
I'd just, uh, I mean, if a setback, a variance of the pool is granted, and I keep the deck within the new setback, um...
But again, that's a setback only for the pool, not, it doesn't automatically include the deck.
Right.
And, and again, I, just one of the factors this board is supposed to look at in deciding whether to grant an area ban, area variance, is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. Is it feasible to knock off three feet off the jet deck so you don't have to have a, a variance? And, you know? Again, the intent is, you're supposed to have a zoning code where you don't need a whole ton of variances. They're not supposed to be handed out like candy at Halloween, you know, so...
Tone moves, sir.
Um, I mean, yeah, if that's, if that's what it takes, I mean, you would make that small.
And, and you gotta worry about the precedent that variance is set.
A lot of judges say, this just eliminates both of the precedent.
Well, or, or puts them on.
Well, at least, at least for a deck in, yes, you know, pool, no, but...
On what, I'm sorry?
On the deck issue? In other words, as we move it back, as we move it back so that it stays in compliance with the six foot?
If I had to do that, to get the pool, yes, that's, I'd do that.
Fair enough. Sounds like a reasonable counter. All right then, we've got still, uh, and we've only got two things to do then. Well, actually, three.
We've got three.
Well, two, you got the...
Two.
No, we have, but you're right, two, because the pool and deck in the side yard is one motion, so then the other one is just the pool itself. Then first, use your little secret thing.
Yep.
It's like two.
It's always on the board first.
Have you ever thought about building a thirteen foot pool? Put it out there, then you wouldn't need a variance.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you would, pool in the side yard, you wouldn't encroach on the side.
Oh, you just say it.
Goes in, down to the ground.
That's not happening.
Right. We thought, we thought about it.
Tree roots.
We did the same thing you did. We said, nah, that's too expensive.
Not just that, but I think it would be a heck of a time digging it out with the tree roots that are around there.
Got it. All right.
One last question. Do you wanna do this this year, now?
Um, they, they are willing to do it now, yes, so, the bad part doesn't really matter to me, six, six and one half dozen are gathered for me, but I don't think we'll get much use out of it if we're able to put it in this year. But who knows?
You're gonna have an heater on this, ruché. You're gonna take insulation maybe.
Eventually, maybe.
Okay, you're gonna need one, you wanna go one now.
All right then.
I guess I'll make the motion that this is a type two under pursuant, no secret.
Type two under circled, we got it seconded on that. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, we're dealing with that. All right, now. So now we're only doing one?
No, we still have the two. The deck and the pool in the side yard.
Yes, that's one.
And then the pool, if she's amenable to reducing the deck to the, there's no variance required, that the pool will need a three and a half foot variance.
Right. Agreed.
All right, so I will make a motion for the approval of a variance for the con... All right, so I will make a motion for the approval of a variance for the construction of a pool and a deck in the quote side yard of the property.
Okay, so seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. And you have your second variance.
And this reference for construction of a pool, for three and a half foot variance for pool setback. Okay, I'll make a motion for a approval for a variance for a three and a half foot se... Three and a half...
Three and a half foot variance.
Three and a half foot variance for the construction of the pool to be within the six foot setback.
In the side yard.
In the side yard.
All right, we've got a motion on the table.
Second, a variance does not include the deck.
Larry has seconded that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? All right, good luck to you. Thank you for giving us your time. And you, good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Fascinating process, by the way.
That's a polite way of saying thank you. I'll get a copy of the money while getting the permit from the lady in the corner.
Thank you.
All right, so having said all that, real quickly here before we go to the car, we have a meeting next month? Aaron?
Um, yes, right now, yes.
Okay, so we will have one, is that, is that October 5th?
No, I believe it's. The 21th? Am I right?
That's the 3rd Thursday.
That'd be 3rd Thursday, 20th, 20th. All right. And so we'll notify all of our other members. Third thing here is thank you, Larry, for attending and for participating in this. Carl, thanks for being here. Anyone got any other motions here before we...
So, are we going to talk about the code changes next month then, since we're missing two more, two board members?
Well, here's, if we want to do that, we want to think about what it is we want to make a recommendation for.
Right, well, originally, we were going to talk about it tonight, so. I'm just curious on...
Like I've said in the past several six months or so, kind of look through the book, see what you think. Because we've already got several code changes we've done and we want to get this book updated as soon as possible because there's already a lot that has to be added.
Who's got the lead on this?
You, you're the chairman. I don't like that. I don't like that, man, most.
He answered way too quick. He did, he did.
I mean, ultimately, once the codes are changed and, or they're going to change, it's ultimately... Normally, it's Jake and I and Don, we do the changes, we do... But anybody essentially can have input because there's also public forums, so I mean, essentially, anybody can.
And our, our idea then for getting that in place and approved by the zone, by the village board would be what? Are we talking about next month? Are we talking about...
In, in ten years?
The way to do it, you can only amend the zoning code by a local law. Local law requires, first, it has to sit for 10 days on the legislature's desk. These days, email it to them. And then it's subject to a public hearing on 10 days' worth. And then after the, typically, the village board does not adopt the local law on the evening of the public hearing. They like to wait two weeks to see if anybody else from the public wants to get the input. And then you, so then you take a motion, you do seeker and all that stuff to adapt it. And then it has to get, it's not effective until it gets filed with the Secretary of State in New York. So, there is no set, it can't happen in a month. It's typically more like two or three months. The other thing that is required under the general municipal laws, that county planning has to be put on notice of zoning changes if they impact within 500 feet of, of the village line. So, if you're doing, so if you're doing a change in the general code that, you know, impacts every district, then those affect it. So, then you got to, it's all online now, but they've gotten, you got to, you don't have to wait, but typically, you wait three days to hear back from the county. Usually, zoning amendments come back as a local matter, they don't care.
They need to say that.
But that would be that at the local level.
Yes, that's all stuff that I do.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot to it, yeah, there's a lot to it.
And then technically, if it, if it affects properties within, or villages of either the town of Webster or the town of Penfield, so the village does, but the town of Penfield, you got to put the town clerks of those municipalities on notice of the change also. But then there's nothing, then if they want to participate at the public hearing, they can. It'll be never here and confront the other municipalities.
So, I think for time's sake, I would say look over your, look over your code books, see what change you want to do. It doesn't have to be done at this meeting, you can call me, you can email me.
No, I'd like to, I'd like to get us, would you put something on the next meeting? Give us no more than 30 minutes, but I can't imagine if it'd take that long. But give us some time to, to bring out whatever it is we think. Fair enough.
We already have, let's, let's...
We've already changed a lot of codes.
Well, and I just wrote down, you know, some's got to be done with the definitions of the front, rear, and side yard.
So, we're in the...
So, we have to do that. And the village board will have to decide if they want side yards to remain unoccupied or not. So, I mean, but so I guess I would think of what kind of area variances come before you the most?
Oh, no, we talked about the shed thing again.
Right.
Shed size.
Well, for shed size, you want to make it even bigger than it is now. We did change the setback from five feet to 10, no, from 10 to five feet. So, that's already been taken care of, but if you want to now allow even bigger ones, I mean, put in there two years ago, you can do that.
Right, I think we're, I think we generally agree 100 and two square feet is probably the biggest. And that's probably the right size, 1612, which...
Okay, well, that's what's, that's what's in there now.
Yeah, that's what's in there now.
It's in there, huh?
Yeah, we changed that. It's the...
But it doesn't, it doesn't allow for all properties.
Right, right, yeah, it goes by...
It's either 1%.
Can't have a lot, this side, organic.
It's either 1% of yours, right. Where it's from lot square footage or 192, whichever is small. Now, you might want to change to 1%, because I think the towns, the towns, the town went to...
To...
Yeah, I, I have it in my office. They just, in the spring, changed their shedding to, I think it's 2% now, it's from 1%. So, that obviously allows for bigger sheds.
Right.
But a town generally has bigger lots than a village, right?
And they said, I believe they said, oh, no, they don't.
Yeah, there is, there is a no exceed event too.
Yeah, I think I, I did the math, the average, like, if I looked at my, my parcel, it's like an average size, which is 75, I want 50.
But there's sheds, you know, the driveways, the driveway thing is weird the way they get it. So, you might want to look at changing that.
I'm going to look at that.
Because otherwise, all the two-car riders are going to try and go to three and you're really... They violate us. They, they, yes, when they do.
You start fringing on the side yard.
Yes. Now, were there some issues with the sign thing? Sign code is always a...
Yes, that's other...
A can of worms.
What ever happened to that guy?
He decided not to...
I, I, the only one I actually literally just got, I think, last few weeks, was for Rush to Regional. The one that was, we have a big stink about, which was the urgent care that we're in.
Well, we might want to, we might want to look at the sign one and see if we could somehow simplify it a little bit. It's really confusing to me. It's probably more confusing to hear. You know, again, look at, let's look at what the town of Webster does, the town of Penfield does.
Aaron?
They need, you know, I don't know what, Penfield's, because Penfield's no good either.
Okay, so I want to look at that. Ours is confusing too.
Question for you, are we coding sign lighting? Have we coded whether you allow for signs to be lit or not?
Internally lit or externally?
Internally, externally, from the bottom, from the top?
Part of the code, I think that's in there.
I was just wondering, what was Kittleberger's? Because they put up a new sign and they put up a new light. Quite frankly, I think it looks nice, but...
It's not internal, it's external?
It's external. Otherwise, they'd have come back with floors and walls. I was just curious, no?
It is in there. Regulating illumination of the sign.
The large metal building on Orchard at the other end, is that Kittleberger's?
Yeah, that's brand new.
Yeah, that's, well, they keep driving those little carts back and forth.
That was the one we were going to look at the site plan and then we said we can't look at the site plan.
So, the village board looked at the site plan and approved it.
Okay.
But now you got site plans bad.
All right.
So, like, if they had, if one on Donovan Street... Well, Donovan, the auto bowl, his thing there, that, if he ever comes back, he had to come back for site plan for this one.
And they did bring it to us, and they haven't seen it since.
Right. I think it's, I think they did it just because in their pantry, we purchased the land, the seller was getting antsy, like, you guys haven't done anything, show me some progress. So, then they said, oh, we went in front of the village, you know, zoning board a couple of weeks ago. Okay, of course, nothing happened after that.
Have you seen it, or it wasn't in Zera's?
I don't remember, no, I don't think it was there. No, it's not, it's a couple of, a couple of other guys that bought it. They might have bought it from Zera. But it wasn't Zera.
Okay. All right, then we've got a, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None.
Tell Tony he has to come to our next meeting, so if we're going to talk about the...